the Dearborn Public Schools Board of Education. Roll call, please.
Hussein Barry.
Here.
Mary Lane.
Here.
Roxanne McDonald.
Here.
Michael Mead.
Here.
Adam Mosip.
Here.
James Thorpe.
Here.
President Petlicoff.
Here. Next, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Donna Jakubek, Principal of Maples Elementary School, will introduce the students who will lead the pledge.
Hi, Dad.
Hello.
So I have Adam Naimi. Adam Naimi, 4th grade. Ahmed Masri, 3rd grade. And Sumer Alabasi, 1st grade.
Very good. Gentlemen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Can you come up?
There you go.
You're our first students of 2019-2020 school year. Isn't that wonderful? You get to introduce... Wait, not someone. Okay. Adam, thank you so much.
Sumer.
Oh, Sumer. Okay, Sumer. Which one is Sumer? Hello, Sumer. Thank you so much. And you're Ahmed. Thank you so much. I hope you guys have a good start of the school year.
Good job.
All right, next item, please.
Superintendent's update. So first, I'm gonna have, on agenda items, I'm gonna have David Mustin come up and do an update on the bond.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board President, trustees. So the great BRICS Bond tour has started, and we are off and running. Mr. Hassan Jaffer and I have already given a couple presentations at schools. Matter of fact, I was just over at Nowlin this evening before the board meeting. So the complete list of all of the bond presentations can be found on the BRICS Bond blog. That has a link right on the Dearborn Public Schools webpage, so if you go there, you can quickly link to this blog site, and you can get all of the information, including the informational meeting schedules. We highly encourage everyone in our community, whether you're a parent or not a parent, to make your way to one of these meetings. It doesn't matter if your child goes to Howard Elementary, you can go to the Bryant one, or you can go to the McCullough-Yunis one. It doesn't matter. The information is the same. We do try to touch on a little bit some of the projects that will take place at that school or within that feeder track, but for the most part, the information is all the same. Try to present a consistent message as we go out into the community. And if you really want to find out more about this and learn about this, we, like I said, we highly recommend that you attend one of these meetings. They're taking place throughout the month of September and October. If you can't make it to the meeting, this website, the BRICS Bond website, has a lot of information on it. We'll continue to update it. We have some frequently asked questions. As we go around the community, we're getting some questions that we're adding to that document as well. And no question is a bad question. We want accurate information out in the community, and so the only way we can do that is to make sure that if people are asking questions, we're giving them those answers and providing that information that they need. Once again, the election, this is the only item that will be on the ballot. It is November 5th. It is a $240 million bond proposal. The bonds will generate $240 million worth of funds that will be used for projects, infrastructure projects, renovation projects, safety and security, technology. There's even a few buses in there as well to update our fleet of buses. So those are all the key elements of the BRICS bond. Currently, our residents pay 4.82 mils to retire our current bond debt. If this bond is successful in November, they will continue to pay 4.82 mils to retire existing bond debt. These are new bonds. We have some bonds that are expiring from 2003, and then we have some other bonds that will be expiring in 2033 that were from the 2013 bond. So these will be brand-new bonds that will go for 20 more years, but the current mil rate of 4.82 will remain unchanged for our residents. That's just some of the key highlights, and thank you all. Any questions? Yes?
I have one. If... What would you recommend if there were questions from community members who can't access any of these? Would you prefer that they contact you?
Absolutely. They can contact the communications office, 313-827-3006. You can find that number on the website as well, but yes, I encourage anybody who has any questions about the bond to call our office, and we'll get those answers for you, and if we can't, we'll make them up. No, if we can't get the answers... Ah, you're listening. Very good. Okay. If we don't have the answers, we will put you in touch with the experts in our district, whether it be our finance people, our operations people. We will put you in contact with those experts who can answer those questions.
But we would like to encourage everyone to look at the website first to get...
Absolutely.
Because there is a lot of information on there, and it might answer the questions they might have.
Yes.
But I just wanted to make sure they had another opportunity.
Excellent. Excellent point.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment on Dearborn Heights. They have an election as well, and for those who vote Dearborn schools, they will see that on the ballot as well.
That's correct. That section of Dearborn Heights, that's part of our district, they will see it on the ballot, and actually, they do have some other things on their ballot.
Right.
Some city council elections on their ballot.
Yeah, so we don't want to forget them. They're part of our school community.
Absolutely. They're a huge, key part of our city and a key part of our district.
Very good. Thank you, Trustee Mosip, for reminding them.
Yep.
All right then. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Next item, please. Or wait, are you done?
Yeah, still going. So we had the opening of school, first day. We're now into two weeks, and I was able to get to every school. Students ensuring that we get them on Instagram. I did have a little issue with Facebook with some of the transfer over, but I fixed it today. It wasn't transferring over properly. But the students, really, it's Instagram. That's where they're at. So, you know, really spent a little... I booked a lot of time in the buildings the first two weeks, and just looking at what's going on, looking at our new food service program. So I just want to say I appreciate, you know, the parents, appreciate the staff for the hard work, the administrators, and the students for welcoming everyone. So it was a great start, and I'm gonna have Mr. Shigfree play a little brief video right now.
Thank you.
So also want to thank the board trustees for their support, and as you know, that vision sign pretty much goes everywhere throughout, and it goes all over social media. In fact, when we're at football games, students... Usually I leave a few of those in the stands. The students usually want to take them. And so we have a teacher went to the Jonas Brothers concert, met the Jonas Brothers, and now Ms. Lutzick from Dearborn High, and you can see what's there. Dearborn has now gone a little bit viral, thanks to her and the Jonas Brothers. So I did send her an email today, and I'm planning to reach out and visit her. And so we may come up with some idea of how many other places can the...
A challenge.
Yes, a challenge, a positive challenge.
Celebrity challenge.
So we appreciate... And it was going all over Instagram over the weekend, so we appreciate that spirit for the vision for Dearborn schools, so.
Yeah, that was wonderful. It was a surprise.
Yes.
You didn't take it to Europe, did you?
No, I didn't. That would've been a good one. David still didn't give me the compactable...
The roll-up one.
You know, because they weigh all your luggage, so. So anyway, it was a great start, and we're gonna continue. So appreciate, again, everyone's support. The last thing I have today is just wanted to talk about the state budget and staffing. You know, we still don't have a budget, as the board is aware and some of the public may, that I'm now on the State Superintendent Association Board, MASA superintendent. So I've already been interacting with that group, and one of the things, the governor actually's office reached out to us, and we almost had a visit last week. Didn't work out. They're gonna reschedule it. But one thing MASA and the Tri-County Alliance, Bob McCann has asked me to do, is to put together a letter that's just factual as to what kind of impact it's having on our district and our students. We know we've had parents at the board meeting, you know, talking about surplus and layoff. And the problem is, is we're in a bad situation because we don't know what our budget is, but yet by state law, we still had... The board had to pass it on June 30th. So it's all based on an estimate, and so when staffing moves are made, and we had to make reductions, and it was something we had to do to be fiscally responsible, it creates a lot of stress on our staff. It creates a lot of stress on our parents, and of course, our students. So we appreciate the support of everyone in the community, including the parents, as we go through it. But I am gonna get active on that front, and already have started. In fact, I have my meeting with that group next week with the executive board of MASA. And so I'm in the process of drafting the letter that's factual, that will kind of let the legislature and the governor know what kind of impact it's having, since they can't... They have not yet settled the budget.
Yeah.
And it's not just me. It's other districts are having a lot of problems because it's just... It's unknown. And so what do you do? And then, you know, all of a sudden, mid-year, are we gonna have, you know, cuts? It's all uncertainty. But I do appreciate, you know, the board and Mr. Wall for doing... We did a best guess estimate based on what we think the budget may be, and we tried to be conservative because obviously we don't want to get in a bad situation, you know, or get the district in the red.
And today, they did announce in Lansing that they tabled the road funding portion, and they're gonna move forward so that they can deliver a budget by the end of September so that we do have some kind of idea about what we will be getting from the state. So that's an encouraging sign, but I'm... Until we actually have it signed, I'm gonna be cautious, but optimistic that they can work through this.
Yeah. And the different versions, the governor's version of the budget for Dearborn is a $6 million difference plus versus the House budget. I think it's 4.5 million versus the Senate budget. So those are just factual realities. That's the fluctuation that we don't know what we're dealing with, and that's a lot of money. It could pay for a lot of teachers or other stuff.
You know, it's the one complaint we've had year after year after year is that we create a budget with a fantasy number every June because we don't know what we're gonna get from the state until September. And it makes no sense. I don't understand it. We're required by law to do it, but one thing we've asked for years is to have an alignment of our budgets, and it just doesn't seem to be anything that has a great push to be resolved. So here we are.
Thank you, President. Last thing I just want to mention is that I have been in communication all the time with Representative Hamud, and he's very supportive. He's been pushing and advocating for Dearborn. So I want people to know that he's really been advocating for appropriate levels of funding for our school.
And I've talked to some other representatives, too, and they were trying to figure out how to do a workaround with the road funding that was causing the stall as well, because they recognized that they needed to move this forward and what we really needed. So there's been a lot of conversation, unfortunately not any concrete action. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Yes. Trustee Lane.
Well, I'd like to ask Dr. Maleko, there are a couple of things that are in the works, not that they need to be discussed, but I do think we need to keep them in our mind and to keep alert to the possibility. One that I've noticed, and I don't know how many people watch evening news, but there have been some egregious incidents of people driving around buses that have their blinkers on for people to stop. I don't know whether we've had any incidents. Mr. Andrews is, of course, here, but I think that there's a bill that's been or will be introduced very soon to increase the penalties for anyone going around school buses, because it absolutely endangers children, and it shouldn't be tolerated. Nobody should even think about it for a second, endangering a child's life just to save time or whatever. The second one that I wanted to bring up is... So Dr. Maleko, maybe you could tell us more. Whether anybody has had any thoughts on this. There's a proposal also to substitute... To allow substitutions in the math category for Algebra II.
Mm-hmm.
Personal finance, statistics, or other mathematical areas of study rather than just Algebra II. So that's something that we should probably keep our eye on, particularly personal finance.
Yeah, it came out over the weekend.
Something that people have talked about a lot, that a lot of students could really benefit from that, and in a time when we have the largest student debt crisis in our country, we really should have... All of us should have probably better knowledge of personal finance.
And the students just don't know personal finance, because I've been trying to help them with that for years.
Yeah. And quite frankly, we know that there has been an uptick in the struggles of students getting through Algebra II when they know that they are... That is not their strength, and that they don't anticipate ever having to use that, while the argument was that it would make them a well-balanced student who would have the capability of pursuing a four-year college career that they might not have anticipated. We know the reality is, is that there are a lot of students who get discouraged and pretty much fail those types of courses, where if they had an other option, such as personal finance, which they will be using in their daily life and go on to pursue a career in creative arts or some other pursuit, that would be more suitable to their personal needs. And I guess all of us kind of wondered about the concept of this four-year high achiever college push that not every student wanted to pursue.
If I might give an anecdote. I sat in on an IEP a few years ago at the request of a family because we had someone here who was very creative in video but had struggles with math, getting through math. So she managed to get a waiver of the Algebra II requirement. At the time, a lot of us were saying, you know, mathematics is a different form of thinking, and maybe not every brain can... Doesn't think that way. There are people that think a lot differently. And she was waived, much to her family's immense relief, but I know that was an option for only a few people. And she ended up taking personal finance, which was really useful. So it would be a really good option. I hope, Dr. Maleko, when you are having contacts with people in Lansing, that you consider that. I personally, just at first blush, think it's a good idea, so I'd like to keep alert to it.
Thank you, trustee.
Okay.
I'm gonna call... Oh, any more discussion on that? Abe Ahmed is gonna come up and read the retirements. Thank you. He's part of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, and we're... The board's aware that we started phasing in, and we're gonna start phasing even maybe even more activity from some of our advisory council members, so.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. What school are you from?
From Fortson High School.
Fortson. Okay.
Senior. Here are the names of the people who are retiring. Beth Kimian, River Oaks Elementary Teacher, 18 and a third years of service, effective October 31st, 2019. Margaret King Ahmed Smith, Language Arts Teacher, 21 years of service, effective September 20th, 2019. Frank Roberts, Division of District Operations, full-time bus driver, 20 years of service, effective August 20th, 2019. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all the retirees. Let's show them appreciation.
Okay, next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements, the acknowledgement of donations. So we got Abe coming back?
We want to make sure you get your steps in today.
Thank you, Abe.
Here are the donations that have been made. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for why you matter. A donation of $1,646.62 has been offered to William Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for art curriculum expansion. A donation of $1,534.30 has been offered to Lindberg Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for ukuleles, tuners, and a rec. A donation of $3,000 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for stoves. A donation of $850 has been offered to Crowder School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for parent university supplies. A donation of $120 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for vocabulary. A donation of $2,000 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for whiteboard and smart boards. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Duval and Lindberg Elementary Schools by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for ceramic glaze and watercolor paper. A donation of $250 has been offered to Etzel Ford School by the Dearborn Exchange Club to be used for the 10th Annual Golf Oding. A donation of $2,000 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Committee to Elect Brian Masalim to be used for purchasing training aids for the football team. A donation of $600 has been offered to Salina Intermediate by Mr. Khalid Abdullah to be used for PBIS. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Might I mention one more thing on financial literacy? I remember now that the college has a meeting coming up on financial literacy that I think the state treasurer is going to be...
Yeah, I'm going to attend that.
And it's next Monday, so 10 to 12.
And it's all stages of life, so it's appropriate for anyone that's... Like, if you're heading towards retirement, they'll do a block on that. If you're in your work years, they'll do a block on financing for that. Students, they'll do a block on that. So I think it's very interesting as well.
Cool. Trustee Barry?
Yes, the donations and acknowledgements. The filo is gonna come in here and thank all the sponsors of the back-to-school.
For the PTA.
PTA picnic. That was a very successful event yesterday, but she still hasn't gotten her voice back, so.
Oh, yes. She was. She was very hoarse.
On her behalf and on all the PTA members, I'd like to thank Dearborn Fresh, Supermarket, Kid Cadia, Village Ford, Pass, Path Tutoring, Floyd Entertainment, Dearborn Lodge, 172 Estate Title, the volunteers from the Fortson Arab Student Union, Robert Cabani Realtor, Kahua House, Sisley's Pizzeria, Detroit Kid City, Alpha Tax, Banhead, Mimic, Westbourne Agency. We have a very generous business community. Also, AKA Steel helped out. She also listed all, most of the local PTA members, and her president is the long list, so thank you to all the local PTA members. I know Dr. Maleko, President Cavalluna from Henry Ford College. I know all three of our directors, most of the cabinet members, a lot of principals attended. It was a very, very successful event. I know the grill team, which was... At least four of us were there. We didn't discuss any business. We were just grilling. Grilled over 1,000 hot dogs and burgers. One of the pizzerias donated 700 pieces of pizza. One thing I liked this year compared to last year, last year, the backpacks were donated. And, you know, thank you for people donating them, but there was also, I'll say, politicians that were invited to the picnic, and they were taking selfies with the students, getting the backpacks. The PTA leadership didn't... Wasn't happy with that, so they decided to pay. They fundraised and raised over $3,000 to pay for the backpacks. We also had a special guest. The National PTA President-elect, Anna King, joined us. She heard from last year, it was a very successful event, and she heard that Trustee Thornton makes a meat hamburger, so she joined us yesterday. So I'd like to thank her for all her support, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to flip back to a non-agenda item first.
Yeah, I'm gonna call up Mark Andrews, and this kind of came up, the question about transportation and just some of the bus capacity and what he's seen. So I'm gonna have him come up and do an update right now. There were some emails that went around on that.
So, good evening.
Good evening, Mark.
So, yeah, there's some questions about capacity in our school buses, specifically for some of the shuttle buses that go to Fortson. And we did some data. We did... You might have seen an email that I sent out, but last week, we did some rider counts, and we compiled that, and we looked at it this morning. So last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday is when we did these rider counts, and we averaged throughout the whole week about six... So we have three buses that transport between Fortson and Michael Berry at the 10:20 time that some of these concerns have come in at. So we have buses that go at 7:20, 10:20, then 11:00, and then 2:00 o'clock. The questions were, the buses that ran at 10:20. So our data did confirm that that was when most of the riders were riding, is during the 10:20. But however, when we look at the data, we only averaged 61 riders per bus. So we can seat 78. I'm not saying that that's the standard that we use, but that's what our capacity is, according to the federal agency, the National Highway Traffic and Safety Administration. So... But what I want to point out is, I think, what's happening, and I talked to both principals today, from Fortson and the Michael Berry centers, like on Wednesday, out of three buses, we had one bus that had 71 students, and we had another bus that only had 52 students. So we need...
Were they leaving at the same time?
Leaving all at the same time. So what we're gonna do, the principals, and both are, all three of us are on board, we're gonna get a list of those students, and we're just gonna assign... gonna assign them a bus, so there's no-
Shoving onto one bus and leaving the other.
Right. And it's easier for the students, they know what bus that they can go to, so.
That was gonna be my question, are they assigned to a bus or not?
They're not, but they're gonna be. Give us a few days and we'll get that worked out.
Are there any questions? I, yes.
Um, as far as the capacity goes, the 78, is that high school students?
So-
Or is it elementary students?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question that comes in. I'm gonna have to fall back on the NHSTA. They're the ones that the federal government, government agency that sets those standards. There's no, uh, you know, they don't take into account, they don't say any restrictions to grade or age. So I'll take it right here and say, it's tight, it's, but the buses are designed that way. So even though we have lap belts on all of our buses, the nationwide, there's no law, no federal government law. A couple states have got on board about putting lap belts on their buses, but nationwide there isn't. So the buses are built with compartmentalization. It's a hard word to say, apologize for that. But basically what that does is it, it, by using high-seat backs, cushioned backs, and it really makes it, there, we have students that complain just sitting in it by theirselves. It's not comfortable, but it's for their safety. So I will go on the record and say, by no means am I gonna speak here tonight about how comfortable it is. But I will say that according, I will fall back on, you know, the federal government and say, it's safe at 78 passengers because these buses are designed completely different than, than what a passenger vehicle is. They're 10,000 to 26,000 pounds, uh, depending on how many students we have onboard. Uh, they don't, they're not built to crush, to take the impact away. They're basically built to go through vehicles. So, you know, like your passenger vehicle, it's built so when you hit something, it's gonna crush. These buses are built to go through other vehicles. Um, and then, uh, so really, I lost track there for a second, but going back to-
We know, we know that three to a seat at a high school body size is, is not comfortable.
It's tight. The one thing I wanted to add, and this is, it's just, when I found this out, it just struck a chord with me. The students' feet are above the average height of a vehicle, sort of a car. All these things are built into the design of the bus to be used without seat belts. So that's why our students, they're in there. Uh, the way I like to explain it to some parents is like if you go to Cedar Point like I do, you get in some of those roller coaster rides, it's uncomfortable, but it's built that way because it, they, it's for your safety.
It's to keep you in-
To keep you in, exactly.
Inside the, all right. So the next thing then is, is that since you did discover that several buses are leaving at the same time, one bus is heavily loaded, the next one has, uh, room, more room than the first bus, say, heading out at the same time, we're gonna make sure that we balance everything out, which should make, uh, less crowded situation on either bus.
Yes. And that's a challenge that we face on a day-to-day basis. It's like by law, these students all have the right that are assigned to a bus, not just on these shuttles, but to school and to home. They're, they have the right, if they're eligible, to ride the bus on any given day. So we have to continually monitor our ridership and make sure that, okay, so for example, Dearborn High, they usually about 90, 85% of the students ride, but you go to Etzel Ford, about 90% of those students ride. Historically, we hardly ever get 100%. So those are the challenges that we face in my department on a daily basis of continually monitoring the ridership and adjusting to where we needed to. Now, is there a day that we might have 78 students on the bus? Absolutely. But I'm gonna stand here today and tell you that, yeah, that's uncomfortable. But I can tell you from what I've received, feedback is that if we leave a student behind, that student is far better likely to have something bad happen to them than squeezing on that bus with 78 other students.
Well, then my last question will be, if it were to, if, are we sending enough buses for the total amount of students that could, uh, if the 100% were to show up?
As of today with the data, yes.
So that, we're not gonna have somebody who's, who's sitting in the floor because there wasn't an opportunity to sit in a seat?
That usually is because of my drivers and we'll continue to work with our drivers to make sure-
Yeah, I was gonna say, are we telling the drivers, you don't, you don't leave the-
Exactly.
Parking lot like that?
Right.
All right. Is there, yes. Trustee Moses?
No, it's okay, no, it's okay.
You had a question?
No, it's okay.
I, I was just gonna ask, so, do, do, when our students ride the bus, do all three ride on one seat? Or do we have some students who take substantially the, the, the whole seat and then you have one student who's left?
And block students from using it, maybe?
I would say yes, and that's what we go through at the beginning. And we're gonna go through this again at the beginning of the next semester to where our drivers and the schools are really great about working with us and getting out there on the buses and helping. So that some students that are bigger, you know, they might only fit two to a seat.
Right.
And then the smaller ones. So, and I really think that assigning them the buses is gonna help with this.
Okay. So, but we only have the problem going the, there in the morning, but we don't have that problem coming back.
Correct.
And why is that? How, how's that working?
That's because probably the sa, I'm just totally guessing here, okay?
Sure.
Probably because I look, I'm gonna base this answer on my son.
Because they're the same buses going, same buses coming back.
Right, he's prob, a lot of these kids are probably advocating to their parents, hey, I can get 10, 15 more minutes of sleep in the morning if you drop me off at the Berry Center. And then they ride our buses back to Fortson. I'm just, I'm just guessing. But to answer your question, it's that they're finding rides to, to school, to the Berry Center at 7:20, and then when they're returning to Fortson at 10:20, they're riding our buses.
And I just, just wanted to mention too, and the board trustees might recall, and I know a couple of you weren't at the board at the time, about a year and a half ago, we had, you came up several times and we had some extensive reports on this. It was in the public when we were looking at capacity and we also looked at the cost.
Yeah.
And with the driver shortage.
And the driver shortage, yes.
So the cost was substantial, so it's give or take. If you're gonna put money here, then where are you taking away from? So it's the decisions that we have to make as a school district as to what, um, you know, the important values.
Well, we did that report, we looked at what would it take if we put only two passengers to a seat, and I looked at that this morning. And again, it's hard because you have to look, you have to really see how many people you have sitting on your buses. But looking at it on paper, it had about nine to 10 buses if we went to just 54 passengers per bus for a high school level.
And that's just for the transport to and from, like the shuttle?
Right. That would be ju, exactly. That'd be just daily transportation to and from.
To and from, okay. Nine to 10 buses.
Right. And, and struck, and we don't have the room at a lot of these. Dearborn High, we don't, we wouldn't have the room to add-
To even park them.
Right.
Don't have the drivers either.
And we don't have the drivers.
Now, I will say on a positive with the bus drivers, I've had bus drivers tell me that they love the new traffic safety over at Dearborn High.
I got to see it today, actually, as, as we went to something this morning at breakfast and I went, drove by and said, oh, this is my chance to see the, and it looked very orderly.
Yeah.
It's slower, but people have to be patient, but it's all in the name of safety. And I know your bus drivers have mentioned, I think to you and they've mentioned to me-
It's actually a little bit faster for our buses to get out because we're north of the light, where before we have to wait for traffic to break, where now we can wait till the light turns red and we can pull out of there.
I didn't, I didn't see an issue when I drove by, so.
I'm there every day after school and it's been working out very well, so.
It's a, it's a big improvement.
It is.
Big improvement.
Just real quick, nine to 10 buses, just to put things in perspective here, that's close to a million dollars a year.
That, yeah, I would say that's accurate, yeah.
Not to mention the costs and maintenance of-
Buying the buses.
Buying the buses. We have three buses on our, um, that we're approving today to replace some of the old ones.
A million dollars, we'll have to take them someplace else and-
You know, I say this lightly because this is what I, this is what we deal with in my office every morning. So if you were to do that big of a step, that could potentially make the district look at whether, because by law, we don't have to provide transportation agenda to students.
At all, yeah.
So in my opinion, this is just my opinion, I wanna make that clear, we're better off squeezing kids on that bus and not providing transportation at all like we do.
Okay, so thank, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Andrews.